Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask for your patience this evening. We are going to, in a moment, adjourn into executive session, so we're going to go into the first selectman's office for a few moments, and then we will come back in and reconvene. So with that, I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Monday, April 8th. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session? Moved seconded by Pam. All those in favor? Aye. We'll be right back. Okay, it's 7:26. We will move back into regular session. Thank you very much for your patience. Is there any public comment this evening? Lots of guests. Anyone here to make public comment? Okay. First Selectman's report. As many of you may have already seen in the media, Chief Ray Osborne has announced his retirement effective September 1st of this year, 2019. Ray has served for 35 years in the Darien Police Department and succeeded Chief Lovello in February of 2017. We want to extend our deep gratitude to Ray for spending nearly his entire law enforcement career serving the town of Darien. Darien is one of the safest towns in Connecticut due in large part to the dedication of exemplary officers like Ray Osborne. We wish him well in his retirement. This Thursday, April 11th, the Board of Finance will finish their budget deliberations and vote on the fiscal year 1920 total town budget. The RTM will continue their deliberations until their vote on May 13th. In addition, there is a public hearing in the Planning and Zoning Commission this same evening, April 11th, regarding some changes to the zoning regulations. And notably, they want to extend the municipal use zone to all town-owned and operated facilities. So if you're interested in that, you can have a doubleheader on Thursday, Board of Finance and Planning and Zoning. Kate and I are working with our Stanford EMS paramedics to find a suitable place to relocate them temporarily while the Darien Housing Authority redevelops the property, old town hall homes adjacent to our paramedic station, which is at 701 Post Road. We will let you know when we have found a suitable location. The relocation should be for no more than 18 months till that development is complete. Just a reminder, as we're going into spring, that the Aquarian's mandatory two days a week irrigation restrictions are still in place and will continue to be in place in perpetuity. So as a reminder, if your house number is even, you can water on Sundays and Wednesdays. And if it's, if your house number's odd, you can water on Saturdays and Tuesdays. And if you have no house number, which is interesting, but I think some of those exist, you can water on Sundays and Wednesdays. Aquarian does enforcement, so they will call you, they will send you letters. And it, it proved last year to be a very good protocol in that we avoided a major drought emergency. So the idea is that we're not using our potable water to irrigate our lawns. The town of Darien is engaged with Western Connecticut Council of Governments, the city of Stanford and the city of Norwalk, on a bus service study. The study will look at current service on the 341, 344, and 345 routes, bus stop locations, bus shelter locations, and will help us with the design template. The goals of the study are to improve accessibility to our town, improve bus amenities, and promote optimization of current routes and stops. So I'll look forward to sharing more information with you as that study moves along. That's it for me.
At your next meeting, I expect that we'll have a bond authorization given to us by the Board of Finance, likely to include several capital projects that you had put forward in the proposed budget that they're going to recommend to bond. A couple of things that I'm working on. I'm working on a guide for new chairman of boards and commissions. I've reached out to existing chairmen to see what they wish they had known when they took over, and that's been very helpful. So extending that to members of the Board of Selectmen, if there's information that you think we should include in such a guide, please shoot me an email, let me know what you think. I'm also reviewing the Blight Ordinance. The members of the committee have been very kind in giving me their thoughts. And one thing that is standing out so far is the timeline can be so expansive that we need to see what we can do to tighten that up some. And lastly, we'll be beginning negotiations next week with the Town Hall Union regarding flexible schedules. That was a part of our agreement, was that we would come back to the table and talk about the possibility of flexible schedules. My personal hope is that we can do something that would allow us to consider a flexible schedule for the town hall as a whole, something with extended hours that would serve our public better. So, that's it.
Thank you. Full business. An item to discuss and take action to approve the summer sidewalk sales. Summer sidewalk sales are to take place from July 11th through July 13th. Do we have any further discussion on this item?
No.
No? Great, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2019 sidewalk sales.
So moved.
Thank you, Mark. Seconded by Pam. Okay, all those in favor? Great, thank you. New business, discuss and take action to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Darien Police Union. I'll turn it over to Kate for description of the plan updates.
So you all have a memo in front of you that highlights the important things. It is, the cost, the cost overall, we've estimated at approximately two one hundredths of a mil. That's based on the 10-118 grant list. The wage increases, you can see two and a quarter for the first year and then 2.3 for the out years. That is less than the average negotiated in our arbitrated settlements in the state. Cost-wise, that averages out to about 3.3 percent when you include the steps. It's important to note that 50 percent of our, the members are at the top step for their rank now, and the number is a little bit skewed. In year two, we have a lot of officers going from fourth step to the fifth step, and that's a very large increase in that year. But by the end of the contract, well, when I wrote this memo, by the end of the contract, 85 percent of the members would be at top step for their rank, but since we've had, you know, some announced retirements, that will change a little bit. On the medical, the premium share, we're ending up the same place where we ended up with all the other unions, just going in different increments. So they, they will go to seven and a half July 1st and then jump to nine, nine and a half. They'll go to 10 percent on the last day of the contract. And what that does for us is, in that period where we expect will be under negotiations, they will have gotten a premium increase, which they didn't have this year. So they've been going this whole year without a premium share increase, but they do get their retroactive pay. So that was really setting us up for the next negotiations. Like the other unions, we're going to the more restrictive pharmaceutical plan. So we do expect those to save us some money. We did offer, as we did with the other unions, the optional buy-up dental and the optional vision plan. The buy-up dental is no additional cost to us. The vision plan does have some cost, but it's minimal. As with the other unions, we're going to payroll and arrears. That was a big, important thing for us. It's not a cost issue, it's an administrative inefficiency issue. So when, if this is, makes it all the way through, we'll be working that out, how to move them to arrears. Some changes in tuition reimbursement, which are favorable for the town. The office will no longer pay for multiple degrees, which we have in the past. We will pay for degrees. They may have to get it at a slower rate because we were capping how much we'll pay in any one year. And we're going to, we asked to start the negotiations earlier. We, we agreed that we would start by a certain date because it can drag on, you know, as you can see by this, that it's March and it's been expired for almost a year, that we're finally coming in with a contract. We wanted to ensure an early start. There were some things that the, the union asked for that were, you know, we think quality of life issues primarily. They asked for additional pay for an order back when a police officer is ordered into overtime because nobody volunteers for order, to work overtime. So we did agree to a nominal amount. It's not a high-cost item. Some swapping of shifts we're going to allow, but there is a cap on how many hours they can work at, you know, one straight time. We are increasing the amount that we would pay for a line of duty death to the, to the beneficiaries of the police officer. That was something they asked for. And holiday pays, you know, right now they get actual pay for the holidays, whether they work them or not, that's the way the contract works. They asked to be able to convert those to paid time off rather than cash. So they're going to have the option to take the day as a day off or to be paid for it. We are going to implement an emergency sick leave bank. And then the last, maybe one of the most interesting things is that they'll be allowed to wear beards and earrings.
Thank you, Kate.
There are restrictions on the, you know, the beards and the earrings.
But you can wear both at the same time.
No dangly earrings, studs, and the beards have to be neatly, you know, maintained, so.
In fairness, the earring component of that was in an effort to provide a benefit to our female police officers, because the gentleman wanted the ability to grow a beard. But it doesn't preclude a male officer from also wearing an earring.
You're just seeing some of the face.
I know. I think that might have been the chief's face, too.
That's why he's retiring.
I really, I really have to thank Kate and Jen and Lori and the negotiating team for this contract. It, it took a long time, it took a lot of work, and there was a lot of discussion, just for your knowledge, about making substantive modifications to the pension plan. And while that did not occur in this contract, we got several things that were very important to us, and I believe that the union understands that that will continue to be a discussion for us as we go forward. I, I see this as a very, a fair settlement. There's some good, very good things in here for us and for our officers that don't cost the town very much money, so I do want to thank you. And with that, I'll first open it up to board questions. We had our time in executive session.
Yes, I feel like, Kate, you did a great job answering. Sorry that the public couldn't get to hear all our questions in executive session, but I think it was a pretty thorough conversation.
Yeah, and I would like to say, echo what Jamie said, the negotiating team, you know, I think they were great. And I appreciate the, you know, Tom Joyce and his efforts as well. His perspective as a member of the Police Commission was very helpful.
So I'll allow for the opportunity for a couple of minutes of questions from members of the RTM, really just questions that will advance your work as we're going through.
Jack Davis, 197 Hoyt Street. First, I want to thank Jamie. Jamie allowed, Matt and I spoke with Jamie, so that we can move this forward, and Jamie allowed us to sort of have a joint meeting here, and we're very appreciative that you're giving up some of the time in your meeting to do that. Two quick questions. I am assuming that the differences in what this is costing us, because it's sort of like a year in, has been reserved, and so it's not really additional costs. I mean, sometimes you have...
So when we do the budget every year, there's this, in line, item in the contingency...
Right.
...that says salary increase contingency. So any year where we have an open contract, doesn't matter which contract it is, we make an assumption as to what we will settle at, and we budget that. And if the fiscal year ends and we haven't settled the contract, that gets accrued. So to answer your question, yes.
Yeah, I've wanted, I wanted other people to hear that. I kind of knew that answer. And I apologize for asking this, but just so that we know, you, you mentioned that the cost of the contract was approximately two one hundredths of a basis of a mil.
Of a mil.
So in a dollar range, can you give a rough estimate of what that is? So...
Hundred and fifty.
That's what I was, that's what I had down here. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else from any of the RTM committees have any questions this evening on the police contract? Yes, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, Matt? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matt Patrick. I chair Public Health and Safety. And just, just more of a general question, we will be voting to not disapprove this contract, is my understanding.
Yeah.
And it's, is also correct to say, if we didn't vote at all, it would be, the contract would go in automatically, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, if you didn't vote at all, the contract would go automatically. We have, under state law, we have so much time between, basically when the union ratifies, we only have so much time to move it through the boards to the ultimate, to the RTM. Otherwise, it goes in automatically. So we do try and schedule it so that you guys have your opportunity.
Right. And while I don't anticipate this, if we voted down, for example, it goes, what, to arbitration?
If you rejected it, we would go to arbitration, and in all likelihood, an arbitrator would simply implement what we had agreed to at the table.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Kate, have we ever had to go to arbitration?
For that reason, no.
It's gone on, yes.
Yes, we have, we have, yeah.
I should have said that, if it was voted down by the RTM.
To my knowledge, we've never had to go for that reason.
Yeah, sorry, there should have been more crap. Are there any other questions on the police contract this evening? Okay, I'm sure things will come up, and, you know, please don't hesitate to send any one of us questions, and we'll get them answered so that everyone's satisfied by the time it hits the floor of the RTM. Thank you. Okay, so I need to take a vote of this. So we're going to continue with our business. We don't mind if you, you can stay, you can leave, but if you would just maybe leave the room quietly, that would be great. I'll read the motion. The Darien Board of Selectmen hereby approves the tentative agreement between the town of Darien and the Darien Police Union with referral of the same to the Board of Finance for a report and the representative town meeting as the Darien Legislative Body for final action. May I have a motion to approve? Pam? May I have a second? Susan? All those in favor? Thank you. That was a nice, quiet exit. I appreciate that.
So far. Sometimes they get out of the hall and they start talking.
No, they all have these, they're through the...
Okay, next order of business is to discuss and take action to approve the revisions to the TV 79 policies and procedures. And we have Mike Wheeler here and Jim Cameron. Good evening, thank you for attending.
Good evening. I'm Mike Wheeler, Chairman of the TV 79 Board of Advisors. Jim Cameron, our program director, is here. Dave Dever is the general manager, is on his way up from another meeting. We thought it would be good corporate governance after our first decade to review our policies and procedures. They were originally a cut and paste from the town of Easton. If you go in and save the document, it still says Easton on the bottom. We really didn't make too many changes. 12 years ago, I guess there was envisioned that TV 79 would be like an AV department for the town and give advice on TV production. We've never been asked, and we really don't have the capabilities to do that, so we took that part out. We made some changes, Kate, with the, we changed, it was rotating three-year terms, and now the policy for committees are one-year terms, so that's reflected in the change. The other thing that we were, we were in air in in the five years that I've been on is we thought that four out of seven, the maximum could be from one political party, and it turns out with seven members, you can have five from one political party that Donna pointed out. So that's one of the other changes. Everything else is pretty much the same. I want to thank Nancy Natali and Catherine Beckman, who did the heavy lifting on this while they were committee members of TV 79. Jim, do you have anything to add?
The other thing that didn't exist when we did the first set of guidelines that you approved 12 years ago was social media. So we're doing a great deal more now in terms of archiving our shows, both on Vimeo and promoting them on Facebook and on a Twitter feed as well, too. And we thought it was important to include that into the guidelines as well. Happy to answer any questions.
I have, first I have just a statement and then a few questions. So, thank you. I mean, the, I can't believe how quickly you can turn all these around, these meetings. It's just unbelievable. The next morning after a meeting, it's up on social media, so, so that's phenomenal.
Sometimes.
Well, a lot, a lot of the time.
Majority.
So this is not really a procedure, so I, I just thought it was worth the question. Because you're an advisory committee for this, is there any reason in here at all to list any of the skill sets or background that anyone should have, or that's not really, that would not really fit into this kind of procedure? Because you seem to be able to attract people that have certain backgrounds, and then just people that are good, common sense volunteers.
And we have sought out that with our, our two new members who have more of a technology background, and we've got a, one or two in the bullpen when the time comes that, that have more technology background, as we evolve from an analog service, which was the linear channel of TV 79, to, to having everything on demand. The, the technology changes a little bit.
But you as a board interview and approve the appointees to the advisory committee, so I'm sure you do your diligence and make sure that we're not getting people who might be better qualified for beautification, and we're not putting technology people on beautification as well, too. We, we've been very lucky to find people in town who work professionally in broadcasting, who understand the, the lingo that Dave and I use when we're talking about the technology. And, you know, I have to say, over the many years that we've worked with the advisory board, there's been a very cordial and supportive relationship. The previous chair was there on a moment's notice, as Mike would be if a crisis came up, and we've worked very collaboratively. So I think Dave and I feel comfortable that the advisory board is there to understand what we're doing, ask us questions, probe a little bit, have you thought about doing X or Y or Z? And the, the new members who are on the advisory board have, have done that. They brought some good questions to the table.
Vimeo's brought a whole nother level of engagement from, we also, for those who have cut the cord, the new YouTube channel, if you subscribe to YouTube, our live channel on YouTube looks great on a 55-inch TV. But the Vimeo has really been a game changer, and now we've, we've added playlists, so effective the beginning of 2019, so you can go in and all of your Board of Selectment meetings are in one playlist, and all the Board of Finance are in one playlist. Every, once it's, it's listed in chronological order, but then you can go into your own. It's, it looks like an, Vimeo's metaphor for a playlist is an album. So you just go to the little stack in the corner, and all your meetings are aggregated in one place.
Terrific.
That's really impressive, and I just think it provides such amazing access to our community, and thank you all so much for all you do. It really is.
The thing we're thinking about now is, we think we penetrated pretty well with Vimeo. The Board of Finance has been nice to say they eliminated one whole level of review because they could watch the reviews that you did with the department heads. So we think we penetrated the, the RTM and the people who serve on commissions, and so what's the next step of, and as part of what the Facebook and Twitter uses, is how do we then engage the next level where there is interest to let them know about a meeting? Facebook has finally rolled out, I don't know, it's called Today Inn, and it's every town, they've, they've started with big towns, but they just rolled out Darien two weeks ago, where it will come up in your newsfeed, and they only, right now, take into account the printed newspaper and the online newspapers. We're trying to get them to include Darien TV 79 in Today Inn Darien as another way to call attention to live meetings. There's certainly no fake news on a live meeting on...
That's true.
And so they should, they should look for firsthand material, so hopefully we'll get some headway through that labyrinth of dealing with Facebook.
That's awesome.
That's great.
I just have a couple of comments for your consideration. This is on page two, when we're talking about the program director and general manager. And some of this is just sort of bylaws wordsmithing, if you will. In bullet number three, it might be good to say program director and general manager who shall be a volunteer. You say it down below, but it might be important to say that upfront. In relation to the bullet four, the objectives, I like that you said, "but not limited to the following." I thought it might be best to move out of bullet five from your general provisions.
We're going to go on to...
Okay, so I'm essentially on page three.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. So under your general provisions, bullet five, you have the language that says, "in addition to information of general civic importance to the community." You see that?
Yes.
Under, under 5A.
In 5A.
Yep. You might want to pull that out and put it in bullet four and make a new C to say, "to publicize information of general civic importance to the community," so that it becomes an actual objective rather than a general provision. Next is a question for, let's see, where are we? Bullet five C, public service announcements for nonprofit or civic organizations. Who decides? Who vets those?
I do.
You do? Okay.
And my, my criteria is, are they a 501(c)(3)?
Okay.
I mean, there are nonprofit or small N, small P, nonprofit organizations in town that may not be 501(c)(3)'s, and I can't think of one offhand right now, and I haven't been approached by them, but I would err on the side of, of the IRS's definition of what a 501(c)(3) would be as a nonprofit.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. And I know that this is very important to your general operating criteria. Under bullet six, where you state that during the two-month period preceding an election, programs which feature elected officials who are candidates for election or reelection will not be produced or distributed. I could, I could give you a myriad of examples when there might be a very important community discussion that would be led by an elected official who might be running for elected office within that two-month period of time. And I would love for you to try and add some language in here that provides for that. I wouldn't want, you know, what came to mind as I was reading this would be, the most important example would be in times of an emergency, where the chief elected official might have to call an emergency meeting of our emergency response team or talk to the public in that way. But that's just one of many examples.
I, I think the next sentence covers that. It says, "this will not preclude their participation in public meetings or special forums of public debate." So clearly, if an elected official were to call a special informational, I can think back of the times we had flooding in town.
Yes.
Where there might be, let's, everybody that's interested, get together in the town hall auditorium. It's not a... It's not an official Board of Selectment meeting.
Yep.
But the first select lady might want to say, "here's what we're doing, you know, do you have any questions, etc.?" I think that would clearly be covered under that. I think the provision is more specifically related to people holding campaign events.
Right.
Which is why we steer clear of anything that seems to be branded by the RTC or the DTC.
Okay. The wording here is, just want to wordsmith a little bit. It says, "or special forums of public debate." Do you need the "of public debate"?
No, because debates are mentioned in the next sentence. We can take that out.
Okay.
Special forums, repeat.
Okay. Great. Let's see if I had anything else. Those were my comments and suggestions.
I'm comfortable with them all.
Okay. Anybody else have questions or comments?
Just a short comment, Jim. I probably should have mentioned this to you before the meeting, but on bottom of page five, it says, "gavel to gavel."
Yes.
That's, in my experience, not quite accurate. If you go gavel to gavel, and then if people do a little chat afterwards, even though it's not public business, if it's more social or something, we find ourselves on TV.
With audio?
Sometimes, yes.
Well, when we're covering a live meeting and you say the meeting is adjourned, my instructions to the camera operators is to lower the volume as quickly as possible and to quickly get off of the shot and put up a slide explaining what it is. When I edit the programs, and I'm responsible for editing the shows to Vimeo and to the playback on the channel, I'm diligent about that. I am very concerned about pre, post-meeting recess, any of that stuff that happens in the room should not be on air. When you recessed this evening, we went immediately to a slide. It said, "during executive session." And that did not go down and the coverage resumed until you said you called the meeting back to order.
So, if you see it, tell us.
Yes, if you do see it, please let me know.
I'm glad I brought it up because I knew you'd have a good answer. And of course, I couldn't tell whether the sound was up or not, so.
If you see it, it's a mistake.
And we've talked about this before, and I know that Jim doesn't favor this, but I would like to, at some point in time, invest in the same kind of microphones that they have at the Board of Education, where when we are commenting, like the legislature, you're on, you're off. And I think that that would do a number of things, that would make sure that you're only capturing the person that's speaking, number one. And I also believe that they help to alleviate some of that ambient noise that happens around somebody shuffling papers on the dais, or there are times when these microphones will actually pick up quiet conversations of the people who are in the audience, which I think is unfortunate.
If I felt that people could remember to always push the on button before they spoke and turn it off when they were done, I would be happy to do that.
We are elected officials, serving the town of Darien as your select body. We probably could learn that.
Okay. And apropos of that, I've already sent a note to Ms. Bush suggesting I'd be glad to contribute a paragraph or two to your new chairman's briefing document to let them know about 79 protocol and what they can do, what they should do, what they should avoid as well.
Yep, because you know what? That's not something anybody's raised so far, so that's a good one.
I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then, should we vote on these? Let's see, yes, we're going to take action. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Government Access Television Policies and Procedures as of 4/8/2019, as amended this evening. Do you have a motion? Susan? I have a second. Mark? All those in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming this evening. Okay, I don't see Captain Anderson.
Yeah, I thought I saw his vehicle in the parking lot.
I do, too. So...
I'll take a peek out the hallway.
If you don't mind. The next item on our agenda is to discuss potential impacts of highway tolls on local roads. And was hoping for Captain Anderson, who was invited tonight as a representative from the local traffic authority.
Would it be appropriate to proceed to the next agenda item and come back to this one? Do we need a...
He's not out there. Do you want me to go down and see if he's at Public Health and Safety?
Why, he would be there. Yeah, I'm not sure. We can have this discussion and we can certainly make it a brief discussion, since I really want local traffic authority representation here.
Yes.
But what I want to say tonight is, there's been so much talk about tolls.
I'm willing to wait for the captain, whatever you think. I didn't mean to say that I wasn't.
Let me just prime the conversation, so whether we have it tonight or whether we wait to have it, I want to let people know the objective.
Yep.
So, maybe it's easier to say what this conversation is not. This conversation is not to debate the political merits of highway tolls. That is living itself out in the legislature as we speak. And it's not to discuss and debate the revenues that could be generated from highway tolls or not, and what would happen to those revenues. Very narrowly focused discussion on the potential impact of highway tolls on our local roads and congestion, and how we as a town feel. I've received a number of emails and phone calls from people who are very concerned about local impacts. And so, I want to have a full discussion about that. I shared with the board via email a resolution from the Town Council in the town of Enfield, who drafted a resolution opposing highway tolls only on the basis of the negative impacts they perceived would occur within their town boundaries. So, we really need Don Anderson to be here because he's thought a lot about this. But I certainly welcome anyone else's comments this evening about whether you have concerns or not about the impact of tolls on our local roads, whether we decide to send a resolution or whether we don't. I think it's an important public discussion. Anybody? Yes.
I'm very concerned about it. Our house is only a couple of houses away from the Post Road, so I'm a close observer of the traffic impacts on the Post Road of Friday afternoon and evening and, you know, and I can tell you, although I can't see the interstate, but I can tell you when it's really slow. So, what I'm concerned, I'm not opposed to tolls per se, but in our particular case, and I don't know about other towns, I just know about our particular case, we have a federal highway is a parallel road. And the federal highway that is a parallel road has a two-lane underpass under the New Haven line of the railroad. So, traffic cannot pass through Darien with any speed at all. And so, it may sound very parochial of me to say, "I just don't want a gantry between exit nine and exit 10 and exit 12," you know? And so, that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Yes, and the location of the proposed gantries will be very important, not only on I-95, but also where they might put them on the Merritt Parkway, because you might have people that jog from the Parkway to I-95 or roads in between in an effort to avoid one or more tolls in a certain stretch of roadway.
So, my solution was ideally, we would have a system where the tolling system would observe when you get on at every ramp, and it would observe where you get off at every ramp. But I don't think that's quite feasible yet, maybe in a few years.
That would be great technology.
Yeah.
I have a lot of thoughts, and actually, Captain Anderson was who I was thinking, when I was thinking about this discussion, I was thinking about how it impacts Darien, obviously, going along with what you had said. So, and I thought of not only 95, but the Merritt and not only Route 1, because I would be curious right now, when there's a backup, let's just use 95. Obviously, I should say, the police most likely know some of the other roads that are affected. For example, someone could get off by exit 13 and they would use Birch Road, or they could use, if they're going to New Canaan, let's say, so Birch Road could definitely affect it. I mean, I started to list some of the roads. Mansfield, talk about the Merritt to 95.
And Eroton Avenue.
Eroton Avenue, Old Kings Highway, there's, you know, we can go on Hollow Tree if someone gets off the Merritt and they're trying to avoid things. So, I guess some of my concerns or questions would be, if we wanted to block off a road, let's say Birch Road, we, the town, or the police department, are they able to block off a road at a certain time of day and only have residents?
So, no through traffic, in other words.
Great, yes, so that's one of my questions. I have no idea the feasibility. Also, would we ever get to the point where we would have to have a policeman directing traffic, whether it be on Route 1, because we could have such a blockage of cars? So, that would be a question. And can we work together, if this is going to really be happening, how do we work with Norwalk, with New Canaan, and with Stanford? Because it will affect us as well as those towns. So, I don't know any of the answers, but those were some of my concerns as far as that's concerned. And then, you know, how would we or how would the police monitor complaints, monitor speed of the cars that are getting off, whether it be the Merritt or 95? I mean, they would have, I think, if this is really truly going to happen, whether it's the police department, the police commission, the Board of Selectmen, a combination, really would try and come up with as best procedures as we could to monitor the backlog of complaints that I have a feeling will happen. I mean, it would be great to think that people would come down the Post Road and stop and have coffee or whatever.
Exactly.
But something tells me that they're getting off the highway to avoid a toll and they're not going to, I don't foresee Darien merchants benefiting from this. Hopefully, I'm wrong. Maybe that would be a great thing that could happen.
See, and I think it really could be a benefit for Darien. And I think we have to be able to spin it, because if it comes to pass, and it very well, it may happen, then we should work with our neighboring towns. We should work as a town and embrace it, figure out with our parking situation, with our developments, as, you know, the Corbin Drive goes up, what can we do to attract these people to stop and have businesses there? Is it more, you know, information on the highway about what we have to offer, like Shake Shack in town, you know, why stop here, you know, where you could go and stop? I think my only real concern is, you know, about over the Darien train pass, that bridge is just so low, you know, what kind of, right now, clearly, we have trucks that still hit it. That will continue to happen, you know, what sort of signage do we need to really, like, as people, before they get off the exit or as they're getting off the exit, say, you know, only trucks at certain height can even make it through the Post Road through to downtown?
You'd be fascinated to know that all of those signs and roadway markings already exist.
I know, but I mean, it's not enough, you know, it's clearly not enough.
I saw a big yellow sign when I got off at exit 13 coming from Norwalk.
They've done an excellent job at being responsive to the bridge strike problem that we have here, but I won't be unkind, but sometimes truckers, actually, the large commercial trucking businesses do a good job. It's the smaller box trucks that they don't have an awareness for how tall their trucks really are. But, I mean, what a disaster when one of those happens. You know, we tell condot about that all the time, when it floods and when you have a bridge strike and traffic comes to a standstill on a major state artery. Could only be worse if we have toll avoidance happening on the Post Road.
And I don't know if you're on the highway right now, if you're on 95 or the Merritt, and there's traffic and you go to, let's just say you go to Waze. I don't know, does it just send you down the Post Road or does it send you on some of these other roads?
It all depends on what people have been submitting to it.
Yeah.
I was just going to say that.
It's an algorithm.
It depends. And so, someone who uses Waze on a weekly basis going to and from my other home, you know, you can tell which areas people plug it in more. Like, right now, Westport's, all their side roads are now, have been plugged into Waze in the last month.
Okay.
So, if there's traffic through West, you know, on 95, all of a sudden, it's redirecting you all through Westport. So, I think that type of thing could happen throughout Darien, no matter what, whether you have tolls or you don't have tolls. And you can see it as you sort of go up the 95 corridor, Waze will start to, you know, certain towns will start to ping up, you know, save three minutes if you go through here and here and here. And I think that's going to make a difference no matter what. So, with that said, I think we have to figure out, how do we embrace it? How do we make it, you know, lucrative for our local businesses? What can we do to advertise, you know, that food is down this way, gas is down that way, so we get people, you know, spending some money in town if they're coming through?
Okay.
I like that perspective. If they're going to come, we might as well take advantage of it.
I would agree. If they stopped shopped and dined, it would be okay.
I think so much is going to depend on where they put the gantries.
Yes. Jim?
Jim, camera 55, DeBoy Street. I would certainly defer to Captain Anderson and his expertise on traffic. And this is obviously an issue on which I have, for a long time, spoken aloud. I'm in favor of tolls. We don't know where the gantries would be. We don't know how much the toll would be. But let's just assume there's a gantry somewhere between Stamford and Norwalk and it's 50 cents. I can imagine, when that toll goes into effect, there will be people who will get off the highway to avoid a 50-cent toll, and for the first week or so, they may find themselves in bumper-to-bumper traffic on the Post Road, at which point I think they will then make a decision of whether wasting 15, 20 minutes on a local road is worth 50 cents or not. And I think that those who are paying the toll will find less traffic and will receive an advantage for the toll that'll be charged. They will have a faster ride. So, I can't imagine the traffic being much worse on the Post Road than it is already when there is a traffic or an overturned truck or something on I-95, because I think people vote with their pocketbooks and their clocks as much as they vote to try to avoid a 50-cent toll. It would be penny wise and pound foolish for them to deliberately get involved with local traffic if it was only for a small toll. To your point, Susan, there was a community in New Jersey that was being very popularly used by Waze as a way of avoiding traffic to get to the George Washington Bridge, and they tried to put in a local residents-only restriction. And I think it was shot down by the courts.
Yeah.
So, these are all, well, most of them are state roads, and I don't, we can discriminate on the basis of residency on those state roads.
No.
And throwing up roadblocks to, you know, discourage people from doing that is probably just going to make things worse.
Right. And also, I maybe I should make myself really clear, especially since we're on Channel 79. So, I was thinking of like a Birch Road that has some speed bumps or humps, I'm not quite sure which they are.
Right.
And it's very residential, and just at certain times, I certainly would never want to exclude people that, you know, need to run down. It was more really of a concern of our citizens that would be out there, certainly not on a regular basis.
And that's a question I think Captain Anderson can answer, whether we have the authority to make roads no through traffic between, you know, 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM. But the other issue with that is, even if you sign them that way, how do you enforce it? So, he'll be able to, hopefully, tell you whether or not that's practical.
Right.
But I think the apps like Waze, it's like water seeking its own level, you know? It will recommend the least busy route. And if the Post Road is backed up and Eroton Avenue is backed up, it'll be sending up people of my street, DeBoy Street, as a shortcut as well, too.
So interesting that the buses for Middlesex already come up Fairfield Avenue and Elm to avoid, so if a bus is coming, let's say, up West Avenue from... so if a bus is coming, let's say, up West Avenue from town to Middlesex, and they want to avoid the light at the gas stations of Narroton and Middlesex, they come Fairfield, Elm, West Elm to the, to the Middlesex.
Really?
On a regular basis.
Well, just for historical perspective, I've been reading old editions of the town newspaper. And before there was a Connecticut Turnpike, all the traffic on the Post Road from New York to Boston came along the Post Road from Stamford, hung a left, and went up Narroton Avenue, right past the old Baker School, because they couldn't get under the bridge over here. They went up to that corner at Narroton and West, hung a right, went down West Avenue and joined the Post Road. And I saw one article from a holiday weekend in 1930 where the traffic was literally backed up from Greenwich to New Haven. And local residents were hanging out on their stoops and on street corners, watching the traffic. It was like a pastime to see all these people crawling on their way to the Cape or wherever it is they were going. So.
Interesting.
I think human nature will help avoid the traffic congestion that I'm as concerned about as you would be. And I think people will, you know, eventually say, "Okay, it's 20 cents, it's 25 cents, it's 50 cents, whatever, but I want to get to my job on time." And it's, you know, if you don't really care about your time, then by all means, take the local roads. Thank you for listening.
Yes, thank you. Well, there are enough people who are concerned about this issue. I know that there have been a, a large series of informational meetings about tolls that have been happening around the state. And so I think an action item for me will be to see if we could get one of those information sessions here in Darien, so we and any others who have concerns can, can bring their concerns forward. Any other comments on that topic tonight? Certainly, we'll talk to Captain Anderson and invite him back for another time. Okay, we have meeting minutes of our March 25 regular meeting.
I did have something. Oh. I don't know, because it was public comment, it was exact, but halfway in, or I sit in the middle of it when it says, "Public hearing to be held Wednesday at 8:00 PM." Should it say Wednesday, March 27? I mean, it's obvious that it is March 27.
Yeah, so I can add in.
Yeah.
Okay. And then there are no comment, sorry, page three. Project updates, Mark's comments are not attached, or they weren't attached to mine. Should they be attached to ours?
Yeah, they should have, we should have attached them to, we'll be attaching them when they go up on the website.
Tips also, okay, websites, good enough.
Okay, okay, that's all. Okay, any other amendments? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended. Pam, you have a second? Mark? All those in favor? Great. Special meeting minutes of March 25. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Susan, you have a second? Pam? All those in favor? Okay, agenda review.
I had something I wanted to bring up or bring back around. I know a while ago, we had talked about, you had, was working with our neighbors and we painted about proposing bike accessibility between us and the beaches. And now that it's spring and I'm seeing people out on their bikes, I'm curious if there was any update or if we could get one at some point.
Absolutely, I will have an update for you. Kevin Moynihan, First Selectman, Kevin Moynihan and I are due to have a conversation. And there may also be a grant opportunity available for intermunicipal.
Great.
Bike pad routes, so I can bring more information on that.
And sort of piggybacking on that, if there were any updates of any new proposals for four sidewalks in town, if there was anything coming down.
Well, there, there are new sidewalks in our budget, right, right.
And what's like the timeframe on some of that?
Well.
You can ask it that at your next meeting, we have joint department heads.
Okay.
Great. I know that he, he's working on, yeah, working on the design for a sidewalk on Edgerton.
Right. So that's kind of first on the list, then?
Yes, there's all, there's, there's three that I know that are at the top of the list. Edgerton, connecting Overbrook to Mansfield Place on Mansfield Avenue.
Okay.
Because it's a blind curve. And also on Tokenique Road. There's an area where the sidewalk doesn't connect between the highway off-ramp and the intersection before Tokenique School. So.
So I was just curious, are those, could it be projects that start this summer? Sort of, is that pushing out further?
Well, at least, at least one of those is in our budget.
Yeah, I would say over the summer.
Yeah.
Great, great.
Always during the nice weather, yeah.
My particular sidewalk hope is the sidewalk between Post 53 parking lot and the other, you know.
Oh, in the, in the train station lot itself?
In the train station lot itself, where you, right now, they have to walk on the road and there's a hill and.
That, that is planned, but the Meyer Building has to come out. And then they have to design it carefully because there's the electrical stuff in there. So I know that is definitely something that Ed plans to do.
Okay.
And it just hasn't moved until now or until next year because of the work that was going on at the Narroton Heights train station. That project could proceed, so I don't think that there's any limitations at this point.
I only commuted one, one year. But in the winter, walking up that road in the dark, wearing dark New York City clothes, you know, with cars coming both ways, is quite the adventure.
We agree, yep. We have a, we do have a conceptual design on that schematic design, so. Okay, we'll get information on all of those topics.
Great.
All right, if nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Pam, second? Mark? All those in favor? Thank you.